Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for June the 16th, 2020. We have a couple of things I wanted to ask you is to make sure at this time if you will turn your cell phones to the opposition so we won't be disturbed during this time we're together. Also, when we have our public comment or public hearings, I want to make sure that y'all know that for security reasons, when you come up to the podium, you do not have to give your address and phone number, just your name, but you do need to give your name, address, and phone number to Ms. Carol Bowden, our commissioner clerk, for the record. So we have changed that procedure for security reasons, and I just want to let you know that. At this time, we have Mr. Joe Dodery.
Mr. Chairman, having our vacation.
There's our pastor.
Good morning, everyone.
There's Pastor Whirl there.
Good morning, everyone.
I'd like to introduce Pastor Whirl. Pastor Nicholas Whirl, or Pastor Nick as he is known, comes from one church and was instrumental in organizing the Unite Wayne Praise Event on the steps of City Hall recently. Pastor Nick continues to share his positive message to initiate communication, acceptance, and change in a peaceful and prayerful manner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for having me. It's so amazing to be here with you guys, and we're so proud of the work that you're doing, and let you know that the religious community supports you and that we're behind you. All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this, these wonderful men who have gathered together to make decisions for our county. Let them know that we are behind them and that we support them. We thank you for unity amongst our county because we have the greatest county in the world. We love you, God, we honor you, and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Whirl. Okay, Mr. Baycott has to pledge allegiance.
Before we say the pledge, let's remember why we honor this flag. Remember our men and women that have served in the military in the past and the ones that are serving now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Baycott. Okay, the approval of the minutes from our June 2nd, 2020 Commissioners Meeting. Is everyone want to look over those? If you have any questions or comments, have a motion for approval.
Same way.
Have a motion for approval of the minutes from the June 2nd, 2020 meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Thank you. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda. Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two adjustments, if we can. Under unfinished business number two, we would like to add setting a public hearing for July 21st at 9:00 p.m. to make certain findings and terminations regarding the financing of a capital improvements project pursuant to an installment financing agreement requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement and calling a public hearing thereon. So this is what we discussed with Allison. We would like to make sure we add that as a public hearing. And then number, the next we would like to add, under consent, number five, setting a public hearing for July 8th at 1:00 p.m. to receive comment on non-emergency transport franchise agreement.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Yes, sir.
On the unfinished business number two, did you mean 9:00 a.m. for that time?
I said 9:00 a.m., yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. I thought so. Thank you. Okay.
We also have some additional walk.
Oh, we do. There's some additional walk-on budget amendments that we did go over in the agenda meeting. Thank you, Allison. And that will be additions for those under number two. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay, does the Commissioners have any additions or comments on the budget? If not, could I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So we'll, okay, we have a motion. All in favor of the agenda as presented, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, under special presentation, we have motion to adopt Resolution 2023, Resolution honoring the memory of George Floyd and decrying unlawful acts of law enforcement officers and applauding the lawful actions of first responders, including law enforcement officers. And I believe Commissioner Whirl has a guest who would like to read this resolution.
Yeah, with us today, we have, let's see here, in a minute, the resolution for George Floyd. Ms. Barnes is gonna do that for us this morning. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The Resolution 2020-23, a resolution honoring the memory of George Floyd and decrying unlawful acts of law enforcement officers and applauding the unlawful actions of first responders, including law enforcement officers. Whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners grieves with the family and friends of George Floyd, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners deplores the illegal activities of law enforcement officers who caused his death, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners is very supportive of first responders, including almost all law enforcement officers who lawfully conduct their business and protect the public, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners insists that there be reforms with an eye toward ending racial disparities, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners encourages peaceful demonstrations in Wayne County, of the state of North Carolina, and around the country as authorized by the United States Constitution, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners desires that individuals who use demonstrations as an excuse for rioting and looting be discouraged and prosecuted, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners desires that systemic racism be removed from all aspects of life in Wayne County where it exists. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners urges all individuals in Wayne County to treat each other with brotherly and sisterly love and to work together to make Wayne County an exemplary place to live and work. This, the 16th day of June 2020, E. Ray Mayo, Chairman, Wayne County Board of Commissioners, attest, Carol Bowden, Clerk, to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. What's the preference of the board?
I will let this resolution be adopted on this date.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Resolution 2020-23. Is there any comments from Commissioners? Okay, all in favor of the resolution as read by Ms. Barnes, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you. Next, under unfinished business, number one, is a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2020-21 Wayne County Budget Ordinance. The Commissioners are aware, we did our budget public hearing at our last meeting. At that time, there was really no public comment that was received. Also, during the past couple of weeks, we've not heard anything additional. So what was presented to you during that meeting is what is being recommended in this budget ordinance. Again, we would ask for approval of this for Wayne County for the fiscal year 2021 and with a tax rate that will remain the same of 66 and three-fifths cents.
Okay. What's the preference of the board? Does it move? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept our 2021 Wayne County Budget Ordinance. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do want to thank Finance. I do want to thank our department heads. A lot of work and a lot of effort that has gone into this budget. As I've talked about before, this has been an unusual budget. We've met Zoom meetings, we've met conference calls, we've met social distancing, trying to get this done. We've lost revenue with respect to sales tax, but we still, I think, have a really good budget that allow us to move forward in a lot of different areas. So we made some cuts and some hard cuts within this budget, but again, it's one I think we can live with, but one that we can build off of as well. And thank you for your support on that. The second thing that was a walk-on is to set a public hearing for July 21st at 9:00 a.m. to discuss financing, installment purchase financing. And with that said, I'm going to turn that over to Allison.
Morning.
Morning.
What I'm bringing to you today is a resolution that is making certain findings and determinations regarding the financing of a capital improvements pursuant to an installment financing agreement, requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement and calling a public hearing thereon, as Mr. Honeycutt stated, for July 21st. And this would allow us to reimburse ourselves through installment financing for projects that have already been approved by you all, including non-one-center voting equipment, software, and the radio project, not to exceed $10 million.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Make a motion that we adopt the resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the financing of a capital improvements pursuant to an installment financing agreement, requesting the local government commission to approve the financing arrangement and calling for a public hearing on July 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might make a comment, I just do want to reemphasize that over the course of the last year or more, we have in fact paid for some improvements, and this is really reimbursing us back for that. Rather than us piecemealing those financing, we're just lumping it together.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of the approach, what's being presented? Would you raise your right hand, please? Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Allison. Okay, we're at our public comments time. I want to open the floor up for public comments. I would ask that anyone that wants to speak, you have four minutes. If you would like to step up to the podium and remember, you only need to give your name. We've changed this for security reasons. So anyone would like to speak at this time, please come up to the podium.
Let Pat sit up first, Mr. Chairman.
John, you have before you some excavated ditches on my property that's right in the middle of a mobile home and RV park.
Just state your name, please.
Steve L. Harren.
Okay, thank you.
Got about 300 yards, 300 yards of ditches open because of the inspector that wants to hold our feet to the fire and do it by the book. I think he's going to be another steward. We all had problems with steward, the inspector. Finally, he went home. And this first picture right here shows the pipe were in the trench. The pipe is already in the trench. The second picture shows the rain and the pipe caving in. Now, that pipe hasn't got any water in it yet, and it's going to flow. It's required to be by the inspector to be buried so deep, so many inches deep. The inspector flat told the plumber that was doing this that he had to see the pipe. It's been customary in the past that when you blade the pipe in the ditch, you could cover the ditch up and take a piece of PVC pipe and sit on top of that there of the pipe that's in the ditch, bring it up above the ground, go ahead and fill the ditch up. He could come there, and his only reason for seeing that pipe is to stick his tape down there to measure. He can measure inside of that pipe. The ditch can be covered up. It'll be safe. The only thing anybody could stumble over would be a piece of PVC pipe stuck up out of the ground. But this inspector that we got wants to see the pipe. Now, you go and put the pipe in the ground, and it rains, then the pipe floats back up. Now, I got to take all this pipe up and dig the ditch back out and redo the whole project again. It's been my custom to, it's been my understanding that this board stands for safety, health, education, welfare, and safety of the general public. That's the reason for having inspectors is so you inspect electric so it's being safe. You inspect the pipe so it's being safe. 300 yards of ditches is open all the whole weekend, day and night, with people out there walking their dogs and children playing. It's not safe. If somebody breaks and falls in that ditch and breaks a leg because of the inspectors having that ditch held open until they can go there and see it and measure how deep that pipe is, I will suggest to, if they break a leg, I'm going to suggest that they sue the county and the inspector that require that ditch to be open. This next picture shows where the water's in the ditch, and the ditch is caving in with all the rain out there. We wouldn't have this problem if they'd let me go ahead and close the ditch up, put the pipe in and close the ditch up, and ever so many feet, put a stand pipe up there on top of that pipe so he can measure from the ground level down and tell how deep that pipe is. If the pipe leaks after it's put in the ground, that's the plumber's responsibility to go by there, dig it up, and fix it. But it's very unsafe like this, and it's because of the inspector holding to the code and not being safe. So I don't know whether you want to change the code or change the inspector. Don't make a bit of difference to me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harren, for coming. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come up to the podium and just state your name, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Whirl, for the opportunity to come today to speak. My name is Dr. Aaron McNair II, pastor of Deeper Life Church Ministries here in Goldsboro. As recent successor of Apostle Norby East Simmons, it is my desire to continue the legacy and support of our city since DLCM's inception in 18 or 1984. Deeper Life has just rolled out our Phase 2 of this year's strategic plan, which includes implementing ways that our church can have a positive impact in our city, particularly in ways that unjustly impact the marginalized, the poor, and the forgotten. To that end, I appear before you today as a servant leader, concerned citizen, and an advocate for those who are disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, the coronavirus. Blacks and/or African-Americans have been identified on the local, state, and national, and even world levels as people disproportionately impacted by this virus. Reasons of that being is because of health, income, and wealth, of course. This translates into a lack of affordable health care and/or insurance, which means that African-Americans have more health problems than any other race, including higher rates of heart disease, high blood pressure, diabetes, and other chronic illnesses, which includes the likelihood of contracting and dying from this virus. So that's why I'm here this morning. More specifically, I'm here to appeal that Deeper Life Church Ministries be a test site for COVID-19. DLCM has membership of some 500 mostly African-American people who serve, and we serve even more persons in the surrounding community. So our request is urgent. Our request is urgent as many people of color have not been tested yet or walking around possibly exposed, a carrier, even on the way to death, simply because we do not know if we have the virus. Many statistics, and I don't have time to go through all of that, but many statistics show that blacks are disproportionately impacted, disproportionately impacted, and the numbers are still on the rise. For example, Wayne County is not reporting by race. However, we do know that half of that which is reported, 1,234 confirmed cases, were from the prison system, which is disproportionately black. We cannot afford, we cannot afford to see how many other African-Americans may be infected. In Wayne County, we must act, and we must act now before exposure becomes death. And Deeper Life is requesting today to be a test site for COVID-19. So I want to see the next steps for this site selections and when they will take place. And thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wish to speak at this time? Please come forward and give your name, please.
My name is Dr. Alma Jenkins, and I am a gastroenterologist here in the city of Goldsboro. And it is such a pleasure to be here, and I thank everyone for allowing me this opportunity. I come before you today actually agreeing, but with a, but with a, how can I say, going to the next level with the testing. First of all, I'm so honored to have met Ms. Pat Ford recently and the wonderful members of Deeper Life Church and your new pastor. And I think it is wonderful that they want to be a test site. I think that is an excellent beginning. I think that there should be test sites throughout the city to get Wayne County where it needs to be. Let me just say something real briefly about this virus and my concern, even in this courtroom right now. This is, the reason this virus is so contagious is because when you look at it, it has spikes on it, and the spikes grab your cells and hold on tight. That's why it is so toxic and very contagious. Now, one of the problems in Wayne County I'm seeing is that we're not really observing all the things with our masks and our gloves because we have to assume that every person in this courtroom has coronavirus. So when you wear a mask, you're protecting other people from you, but you are not protecting, when I wear a mask, I'm protecting myself from you. But if you don't have a mask, you're not protecting yourself from me. So as you saw me giving out masks as I came in, because whoever comes in assumes that they have the coronavirus, and we want to protect all of our wonderful leaders that we have here in Goldsboro. So that's one thing. Wayne County has at least 1,444 cases of positive coronavirus right now. And the way that we can get this number down is not hard, but it's difficult, okay? We're going to have to test everybody in Wayne County. We're going to have to isolate the people who are positive, and we're going to have to contact trace for everyone who has been around those people. If you do that, you're going to bring your numbers down in a heartbeat. It's been proven already. Vietnam has 97 million people, and they only have 300 or so cases of coronavirus. So we don't have to keep having these numbers go up. We can bring them down. So I want to encourage you that that is where we ultimately want to go, and I'm talking to some other leaders, to see if we can do that. But right now, I think that doing it in areas of risk, such as our wonderful Reverend has said, and Deeper Life, you certainly are correct to go that route and start doing it in those areas with an eye toward having everyone get done. There are approximately 120-odd thousand people in Wayne County. If each test is $10, say, then you have enough money to do testing to everybody in Wayne County. So I want to just encourage you and let you know that that is the push that some of us are also taking and to be very supportive of what has been said. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know we don't usually make a comment about the public hearing, but I just want to personally thank Dr. Jenkins for this comment. And you did answer one of the questions that I was ready to ask was the approximate cost per test. You'd deem that to be $10 per?
Well, I'm assuming, I have not checked with the lab yet, but if you were to charge $10, would you very likely uncover that? I'm looking into that now. But I randomly assigned that to the test, then that would mean that you have enough funding. Now, that means you negotiate with the people who do it, which is very possible.
And may I have one of your masks? I left home late this morning.
Yes, I have a bunch here.
Thank you. I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I know this is a little bit out of protocol, but...
But that's okay.
This is such an important thing, and thank you all because if information is correct, 70-some percent of the people who are contracting, who are dying from the virus are minorities. In some fashion, Hispanics and Afro-Americans make up that largest percent. And so, not to be turning this into politics, but it seems like as soon as the world found out that 70-some percent of the folk who were contracting the virus was minorities, it was okay to open the world back up and start back in business. And I just want to leave that on the table for whatever interpretation anyone would like. Thank you for bringing... Thank you for bringing you all volunteering to be that site. Once this, once they are, and I know our county manager is looking closely at how that process will take place. So thank you all for coming.
We are still in our public comments time. Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, please come up and to the podium and give your name, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, my name is Larry Jones. I'm president of Norway and Moonai, and we are positioned up in northern Wayne County, and we work closely with the local government in that area. I too have been involved with the exploration in terms of what can we do to help with the virus, and I just wanted to make it public and known that Norway and Moonai is making themselves available as being a test site. As you look at funding, please consider us, and we again try to help out in northern Wayne County area. So again, thank you for your work. I know you got budget money, and we just wanted to let you know that we want to be a part of that sharing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is anyone else wish to speak at this time? Please come forward and give your name. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, at this time, our public comments are closed. Thank you all for coming and sharing with us very important information for our county. And thanks again for coming. We certainly will take all this under advisement, okay? Thank you. Mr. Hinekut.
Next, we do have our Appointment Committee.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, sometimes meetings and communication can get delayed, and as such, we are reconsidering our recommendation for the Board of Health, and we'll like to make a recommendation, another recommendation in two weeks. Need y'all's blessing on that.
Okay, good. Is that a form of a motion? Okay, we have, we have, we have...
Well, we don't need to have a motion.
We don't need one on a recommendation, do we?
No.
You do?
No, you don't.
Okay, all right. You're correct.
All right. But we do have some appointments and reappointments today. We would like to appoint Mr. Kevin Stallings to the East Carolina Regional Housing Authority. And that's in form of a motion, that's a new appointment.
That's recommended on July?
In July, right. This is recommendations.
Recommendation.
Okay. The Appointment Committee would also like to recommend the reappointment of Ms. Margaret Davis to the Commission of Council on Older Adults, and that's a recommendation. And also, a new appointment, the George Chapel Fire Department has requested that Mr. Pete D., Mr. Perry D., Pete King be appointed to the George Chapel Fire Department to fill the vacancy of another member that was on that board is deceased, and that's a recommendation from George Chapel Fire Department. And that's all that we have today. Okay, do we have, we have any other appointments that we need to vote on today?
No, but Mr. Chairman, if I might, did you all get a recommendation for the veterinarian on the Board of Health?
That's what they are going to do.
Mr. Aco, what we're not going to do is ABC report, Mr. Dow.
Do you have that on agenda, ABC Board?
We made the recommendations before we invited y'all.
Here, can we make?
Yes, I apologize. We discussed the chairmanship, but we're gonna wait until next meeting, but you did have the recommendations that you tabled until this meeting. My apologies.
Okay, and I don't, I don't have to have a paperwork on it.
I know Efton Sager was one of them.
Efton and Dave Metters.
Dave Metters.
Dave Metters, that is correct, for reappointment.
What's the pleasure to board?
I need a motion.
That's in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any questions, comments? All in favor of the appointments as presented, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we're unanimous, motion carries. Okay?
Yes.
All right. That's all we have. Thank you, Mr. Hinekut.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And next is our consent agenda, and if you remember, we did have two additions under budget amendments. We did have some walk-ons that were discussed in our agenda meeting, and then we did have a number five setting of a first public hearing for July 8th at 1:00 p.m. to receive comment on non-emergency transport franchise agreement.
Okay. What's the preference of the board?
Timo.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent as presented, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And now, under New Business, number one is the timeline for filling term of former Commissioner Ajo Gurley. And again, this is the similar timeline that we use for filling Commissioner Bell's seat. Today, June 16th, 2020, you will adopt a schedule by the Board of Commissioners at our regular monthly meeting. Then two weeks later, on June 30th, 2020, will be the last day for applications to be submitted, and that is a resume and a cover letter that is required, and that should be to the county clerk, Ms. Bowden, by 5:00 p.m. Then July 8th, which we recommended we set as our next board meeting, that we were scheduled on July 7th, this will be July 8th at Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. We will have interviews with the candidates 10 minutes after the conclusion of our regularly scheduled meeting. And again, there should not be a lot on that agenda, so we should start fairly close after 1:00 p.m. interviews. At the end of those interviews, you will recess that meeting until July 14th at 1:00 p.m. And then July 14th, 2020, at 1:00 p.m., the Board of Commissioners will reconvene meeting from July 8th to make the appointment, and the new Board of Commissioner member will be sworn in on July 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the timeline for filling the term of former Commissioner Ajo Gurley.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the timeline as discussed, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous, motion carries.
And we'll make sure to get that out on all social media and posting and making sure that we get that information out as well as we can. Next, under New Business, is a motion to approve amendment for historic tax credit agreement with WNB Landlord LLC. With the board, but remember, this is the historic tax credit property or project that we worked on with the city of Goldsboro that's looking at doing some rehab for residential and commercial spaces. The amendment basically that they're asking for is once they're now in the design phase, they've lost a little bit of square footage on the commercial side, about 1,100 feet, and they've gained eight residential units. So the agreement for the historic tax credits were very specific about the square footage for commercial and the number of residential units. So we do have to amend our agreement with them to reflect that. And this was also on the city of Goldsboro's agenda for approval last night, and I believe it did get approved. But everything else remains in full force and effect.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion is unanimous, approval is unanimous. Okay, Ms. Tinekut.
Just want to let you know, ask for an update from Erin or Brenda with respect to our COVID activities. We are working with the CARES funding. The grant, as we discussed earlier, for the $2.3 million was submitted to the state for final approval yesterday. We are working with UNC Wayne Health Hospital and trying to look at where the best sites are for testing. And one of the things that we are committed to do is make sure that our churches are involved in helping us get the word out, and if we need volunteers to help as well, we'll be making sure that we ask our churches to participate. We've not decided upon locations yet. I think we're gonna start one very centrally located in Goldsboro. We've not, we're still working on that now, but then we're gonna try to move that out into the northern and southern parts of the county as well to make sure that we reach all areas, especially the areas of disproportionate cases within our county. So I do want to thank Dr. Wise and Erin for all the hard work that they've done. We got a draft of that, or I got a draft of the project last night. We're still trying to finalize times, areas, and locations now. So, but it is moving forward, and we're hopefully will have that finalized by the first part of July. If there's any questions. And just, and FYI as well, the state is giving out some new guidance with respect to testing that has really loosened up the requirements, basically saying you don't have to be symptomatic anymore, you don't have to be doctor ordered. So we are, you know, really making sure that we reach those disproportionate areas as well within our county. If there's any questions. Other than that, as we talked about earlier, we are moving forward with the non-emergency medical transport as far as getting an additional franchisee. We have that, RFQ is opening today at 2:00, and again, we set the public hearing on this for July, so that is moving forward as well. So things are just plugging right along, so appreciate the support if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Hinekut. I have a question that, do you remember the timeline? I'm still getting a lot of requests from citizens about Grantham WiFi. What was the timeline on getting the WiFi up? Was there a timeline?
I don't know if there was a timeline. We're still trying to work through the grant, the great grant.
Yeah.
We're still trying to work through that. I don't...
But then he's talking about the Grantham Tower.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
They're installing equipment.
Yeah.
That's Grantham Tower?
Yeah. Yeah, the equipment has been, the lease on our tower has been done and completed, and they are installing equipment there.
I believe he said 30 days.
Yeah.
Well, the other areas of the county, like we still have some spots up in northern part of the county, people are getting concerned because school's gonna be starting in August.
Right.
Okay.
The great grant, but out of pertaining to the other sides.
Yeah, yeah.
It takes about 45,000 per tower to start up.
Yeah. Okay.
I had similar question, but on Pines View Cemetery Road in the south.
Yeah.
From Pines View Cemetery Road, I had two requests.
For y'all's information, the new, the new towers that the county is putting up for the 911 system that's capable of also carrying the broadband, the concrete, footings has been poured, but they've got to sit for 35 days. There's a timeframe they have to sit before they can start erecting the towers, but the concrete footings has been poured, so we're just waiting for that concrete to cure now before they can start erecting towers.
Right.
So the process, the process has started.
Yeah.
The tower, my understanding, the towers are here or ready.
Yeah.
Or ready, but the wait right now is waiting for the concrete to cure.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners' comments, Mr. Aco.
No, sir, I don't have anything today.
Mr. World?
Yes, I would like to thank Ms. Sylvia Barnes for reading the resolution for Mr. George Floyd, and I appreciate the work that you're doing for the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County for a number of years. Thank you for coming out and doing that for us. Also, would like to thank Pastor McNair and Ms. Ford for sharing the concerns during the unprecedented time of uncertainty due to the COVID-19 testing. And I commend Deeper Life for their continued support for Wayne County and working together to make the church a local testing site. So, you know, I encourage Wayne County, let's step forward on this pertaining to our Black and Brown people as far as their testing. We want to be the forerunner in this area to make sure that we are getting tested and that our people are safe in the community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Dow.
No comments. Well, Commissioner Aco kinda led the way on that, so...
Okay, Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would also like to extend by a very heartfelt thank you to Ms. Sylvia for being here to read the resolution. As a history major and a historian, I just want to add just a little something to that. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silos of our friends." And I just want us to reflect on that just for a moment. He also added that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And so if we do not practice justifiable actions in Wayne County, then the world will look around and may shed their eyes on Wayne County and say, what they've done is what we may do. So it is incumbent upon us to live up to those things which we say every day when we give the pledge of allegiance, because if you focus on the last line, it talks about having justice for everyone. I would like to read some names to add to George Floyd. Rayshard Brooks, last Saturday night, last Friday night or Saturday night, and I will not get into all the legalities of what happened, but fact is, he's dead, and he was shot in the back twice. They always say that if someone is trying to break in your house, even if they've got the TV in their hand and they're running out the door, you can't shoot them in the back. Better let them go on with the TV. I've also heard that the tasers have to be, and I would, I'll apologize if I'm not correct, but the information I heard was that once a taser's fired one time, has to be something done to it for it to be able to be effective the second time. It's unfortunate that it seems like on a continuous basis, it's becoming easier to shoot people in the back and all that. Breonna Taylor was in her apartment. Unfortunately, she was shot eight times. Trayvon Martin, and this is a little bit of a history test, Emmett Till, I want you to remember that name, and if you're not familiar with it, please look it up. Meghur Evers was shot down in his yard. The other names shot, or other names that died as a result of direct interaction with law enforcement was Michael Brown, Eric Brown. And of course, not by the police, but Dr. Martin Luther King lost his life on a balcony, high-powered weapon. In 2015, there were 100 unarmed Black men killed by police. Therefore, the above facts that I have read is the reason that every night on TV, you see probably 50 million people around the world that are chanting, "Black Lives Matter." We've been in this country for 400 years. Black people have been in this country for 400 years, and our resolution has a couple of things that I want to just allude to. 400 years, and our resolution has a couple of things that I want to just allude to, and I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for, and our attorney for putting together what he felt like was a good resolution. There are several things on here that's very important, though. They're all important, but I want to bring attention to this. Ending racial disparities. And also removing systematic racism from our society. Systematic racism is something that is so pervasive, but it has a silence to it, but it creeps through all communities without exception. And as Americans, that I feel like individually, we really love each other. It's when we back off into our camps, it's when we start to slip and slide. I have some, I have the greatest respect and admiration for many people that I lived near for the last 30 years, but we also have to recognize in every household, including my household, at times, divisions where race is concerned raises its head. And my last request is, and this is a little bit of surprise, Ms. Carroll, but I would like for you to begin on our radio station, to have George to start to develop conversations, almost similar to any TV station, to have conversations about race and how we can do better. Can't do better unless we try to do better, but information is one of the things that will cause us to try to do better, and as a county with a television station, I would just love to see us move in that direction. Thank you. I know your creativity, I don't have to try to spell it out, I knew your creativity would take care of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fife?
I apologize, I left my notes from my hospital more than being on my desk in my office.
Good, I think not.
Yes, well, and I promised I'd bring you some stats from over there, and I've just forgotten, left, but I do remember, we do have the most cases over there at the hospital right now we've had since the inception of all this, this coming on. They've got plenty of protective equipment, that's not an issue, plenty of ventilators and that kind of thing, but they're still following the same guidelines of trying to, you know, just keep people out of the hospital and that kind of thing, as doctors friend. But I wanted to give you those figures, and I apologize, I'll get those to you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fife. I have a couple. First of all, I think our county manager in his week of report pretty well summed it up. Last week was a weird week. I do want to thank the county manager, staff, attorneys, all of our finance people, put a tremendous effort forward to come up with a solution for the Wayne County Public Schools to help them, and I do, all of us, just fully appreciate the work. I know firsthand the work y'all put in, so thank you for that, appreciate it. Secondly, I want to make an announcement that being on the library board for quite a few years now, if you remember, I guess it's been a year or so ago, we, Donna Phillips, applied for a library grant, it's called an LSTA Easy Planning Grant, and LSTA stands for Library Services and Technology Act. We have gotten, we have been accepted and have gotten that grant for, what was it, $11,500, something like that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. County Manager. But what that does, if you remember, it allows us to do a study of Wayne County libraries, especially pinpointing the northern part of the county where a library, library should be located. That's what this money is for. We've been waiting for this. So, when this study, when this study is done, and I do not know a timeline, you know, it may be a while before we do anything with the library in the northern part of Wayne County, whatever, but at least we will have recommendations as to the location that that library should be. That's what this money is for. Last but not least, I'm like all the rest of you commissioners and all of us leaders, my heart is heavy on what's happening in our country. My heart's heavy that we have lost so many good people at the hands of supposedly officers, for whatever reason, have done things that we don't agree with. The bottom line is, is that, in my, this is my personal opinion, and I share it, and I'm not ashamed to share it. This problem needs to be fixed, and it will be fixed, but you know what? The biggest help that we can have is that if we can put God back in our society, we have taken things out of our society that refer to God, God can help us with this problem. And the Bible's clear, it says, "Ask and you shall receive." If we don't ever ask, we're not going to receive anything. I think our faith and people standing up like we are, like this commission of board has with this resolution today, is a start. It's a long way back, but you know what? You know what I long, and I saw a picture on Facebook, and I can't remember who put it on there, but when I was a kid, there's a picture on there of some kids in our neighborhood, on Sunday afternoon, even though we went to separate schools, the blacks and whites got together on Sunday afternoon and played basketball. You remember those days? You remember those days? We'd get together on, and we'd play all day Sunday afternoon, all afternoon. The key is, is that we need to get back to basics. I long to see the day where that picture could come back into play, that even though we went to separate schools, we were more together back then as far as respect for each other and working together and playing together than we are today. I long for those days, when we can come back together and be a, be a whole society. No, you're not better than I am, and I'm not better than you, or God created a sequel. So, that's the sermon for the day, but that's how I feel. Any other comments from the board? Anything that you would like to add? Okay, we have to get back into closed session, right, Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir, for the same reasons you went in earlier.
Okay. All right. You want to? Okay. Motion clear in the closed session, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we're in closed session. You want to take a five-minute break, or you want, let's keep going?
I'm going to.